Got to make sure that the mics reach to the back of the audience. Sweet Caroline. It works.
You're live right now, too. I'd like to please call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools for April 26, 2022, at 6:30 PM. If everyone could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. This is our first opportunity for public comment. I do not have any public comment forums for the first section. Just double checking with Betty. Is that correct? Okay, so I will not read this entire paragraph tonight, and we will move to response to public comment. Just simply put, sasboard@celineschools.org. We really appreciate hearing from community members, students, particularly staff and families. So, thank you very much, and using the Let's Talk feature on our Celine Area Schools website. Moving right along, we have some guests with us tonight. Julianne, would you like to introduce our student showcase?
Yeah, today we have the Celine High School Connecting Club advised by Ms. Fair, and it looks like we have a fair amount of students, so I'm excited to hear what you guys all have to say. Come up to the podium.
Yep, and if whomever is speaking can come up to the podium, so our viewers on the livestream can also hear you, that would be fantastic. There's a button, and if you just toggle it to make sure the green light's on, it'll pick up on the YouTube stream, too. Yep, this one right here. Good question.
Hello. Okay. My name is Grace Munn. I'm on the EC Board for Connecting Club, and a couple of my members and I are here to talk about the club. And the club is supposed to be an inclusive space, and we like to make sure we include everyone. And you can see our quote is on the screen, and it is where all pieces fit, is what we like to live by. Next slide, please. Our Executive Council consists of Julia Monday, Ava Schmidt, Grace Munn, Cam Smith, Sarah Rosati, and Morgan Cubitz. And the juniors are Shane Pitcher and Campbell Miltonberger. We like to have weekly activities, so our first activity that I will be talking about today are drop-ins. We like to have this every other Thursday. Our goal during this is to play games and get to know one another as much as we can, and the Executive Council likes to plan these the Thursday before we have them. And then next is our weekly lunch groups. If you could go back a couple of slides. One more. There we go. These are every Thursday. They are during every single lunch, and we like to play games and obviously eat our lunch and just ask it to know you questions, so we get to know everybody in the club individually. Thank you. Ella Dover. And this is what Ella Dover likes about lunch groups.
I'm Sarah, and so a few activities that the Connecting Club hosts are we have tailgates before the football game, so we always hang out and play some games. We have like cornhole setup and other games, and then we all like walk together to the football stadium and sit together up above the student section and just cheer and enjoy the game all together. And then another activity we have is pumpkin painting, so we all just hang out and paint pumpkins. And this year, we got to leave them at the Kindness Rocks Center or Garden that we have adopted to our own. So, we got to add to that this year. And then a big activity that we also did was the Polar Plunge and Inclusion Week. So, Inclusion Week this year, we had a spirit week and fundraised throughout the entire high school, and so it was a great opportunity to get everybody involved, and we had a lot of fun. And then we got to have the Polar Plunge this year at the high school. So, a lot of, we got a lot more volunteers this year, and people came out to watch, and we got to just make it more personal and more to our high school, so everybody got to be involved. And this was very exciting because now, next year and the other years to come, it'll be a bigger event, and hopefully we'll get to raise a lot more for Special Olympics.
Hi, my name is Ian. I enjoy Connecting Club, and I like going to lunch groups. I like lunch groups because I get to talk to people I haven't met before and learn about what they like to do. I didn't know many people when I came to high school because I moved a lot, and now because of Connecting Club, I found people who liked the same things as me. I also like to play fun games, like, you know, in headbands.
Hi, everybody. My name's Julia Monday. Each year, Connecting Club really likes to leave our mark on the school, and back in 2017, we ended up receiving a grant from the Celine Area Schools Foundation, and this was helped to fund all of our club activities, but ultimately open up our Kindness Rocks Garden, which you can see on the slides. And this year, our Executive Council made it our decision to make the Kindness Rocks Garden more accessible to everybody. So, we were able to include a concrete pathway so that anybody with a wheelchair or crutches or anything that might be a little bit uneven on the ground can get through perfectly fine. And as of right now, the concrete has been laid, and it's just getting ready to dry, so that it'll, come late May, it'll be all ready for use. And we will then install our Inclusion at Celine High School is sign, which is what our Executive Council from 2021 last year decided to leave as their mark. So, it's a big plaque that says a bunch of words about what inclusion means to us at Celine High School.
Hi, my name is Campbell Miltonberger, and I enjoy Connecting Club, and I am on the Executive Council. I go to lunch groups every Thursday and like to play Uno at lunch groups. I also like to come to Thursday morning drop-ins where we play games. Just Dance is one of our favorite games to play.
The EC also put together some of the quotes that we think resembles Connecting Club, and to combine most of them. It's just that everyone is super excited to meet new people and say hi to people in the hallway. Actually, today I had someone from Connecting Club say hi to me in the hallway, and it was the most fulfilling thing ever, and I felt so proud to be part of the club. And on the next slide, the rest of the EC also put what they thought was important about the club. So, yes, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much. I know how hard public speaking is, and you each did a really, really wonderful job, so thank you for coming. Make sure the parents and guardians got your picture, okay? Do any trustees? Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, come on up, yeah. Oh, okay. I see you on the agenda, though, so good thing. Betty never forgets anybody. Susan?
Thank you all for having your club and coming to speak about it tonight. I always enjoy seeing on social media the things that you are doing, and, you know, it looks really engaging and fun, and so I'm glad that you've created this club. And also, it sparks joy whenever I walk and see the Kindness Garden before going into the building, and the accessibility part of it is amazing, so thank you all.
I just wanted to say thanks for coming. It's also been like super rewarding to see so many of you growing up and see what you're doing now, and making this a part of your priorities and a part of your week just really is a beacon for our community and for our school district. And I today was actually walking into the high school, and I saw the Kindness Garden and was thinking about our weather on Sunday and wondering what the plans were and when you were all going to be resuming your meetings out there, because it is such a, it's just a bright spot to see when you're walking into the building. So, thank you for the work that you've put into that, and especially for making it inclusive this year. Thank you to Mrs. Munn and Mrs. Fair for the work that you're doing and supporting all of our students in Celine.
I first got involved in my own high school's version of the Connecting Club in 1970. I'll say it. 1973, and, but you guys have done so much. I love the garden. I love all the activities that you've done. I used to participate with Special Olympics. I've been doing that since 73 also, but I haven't done it for the last 10 years. Are you still looking for volunteers? I've seen bowling, track and field, floor hockey. Let me think, what else? Have I missed basketball? Anything else? Have I missed a sport? I did not say soccer. See, I blanked soccer out for some reason. So, you're still looking for volunteers. Any one of us can pop in at any time, or do we have to contact someone in particular? Who is the contact?
They actually aren't involved. We're a project unified school, so we do Special Olympics more peer-to-peer, and they don't actually go to, well, we used to go to Special Olympics practices and stuff, but it's kind of the COVID.
Well, to help you directly, if there's something that we can do at the Board, feel free to ask. Happy to, I'm speaking on behalf of all of us. We're happy to help in any way. I've got rocks. That need painting. Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge you. Thank you. I appreciate you visiting. Tremendous. Great group.
I just had a question. How do other students coming up to the high school next year get involved? Can freshmen get involved? Or what's your advertising plan?
Yeah, so any grade level can join Connecting Club. That's what it's all about. We love getting the whole school together, so it's not just seniors and juniors versus underclassmen. So, we love getting everyone in our school involved. And I think we'll be working on getting the EC for next year. Once we have them appointed, they will put together their own way of getting members involved. So, usually we do a Google form. That's what we ended up doing last year, and we just have a big Google sheet of everybody's names that wants to join the club. We'll put it out on all of our social media. We'll ask for the Celine Area Schools and Celine High School to put on their social medias just so that we can get the word around, and we start to kind of advertise before the end of the year is done by just showing what we do at Connecting Club. We take lots of pictures and stuff so that we can show other people who may not know what Connecting Club is, what it's all about. And from what we've done so far this year, people seem to be really excited about it, so we're really excited to be hopefully getting some more new members next year.
Awesome. Thank you very much, everybody. We appreciate you. Oh, yeah. Picture time is just fine. All right. Thank you. You are always welcome to stay, but understand if you have homework and other activities this evening. I'd like to now move on to revisions, approval of agenda. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual Board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion, Gerbi.
I would like to make an amendment.
Okay.
So, I would like to, I move to amend the agenda to include Discussion Item B, add Discussion Item B on COVID updates.
Okay, trustee Eastup has moved to add an agenda item as number B9. Does this have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Who would be leading that discussion?
Dr. Locke.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, Jenny.
I just was going to note that Steve had mentioned that this could be a part of his admin update, and I was, I'm comfortable with it being there, too.
I'll echo that. Like, I'm comfortable with that being a part of his prepared presentation tonight.
And I understand that it was going to be part of the administrative updates. I would like an opportunity. We've had, four members have been contacted by several families, and I want to make sure that all that information is covered, and if any Board members have questions, they can ask.
Okay. I wanted to echo Brad and Jenny and just say, I understood this to be a part of our agenda already, so I would just add that. Any other comments? Okay, we will move to vote. All those in favor of adding Discussion Item 9B COVID update to the agenda, please say aye.
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 So, I'm just having a little trouble hearing. So, Michael, was that an aye? I'm sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. Could we say?
Aye.
Yeah, roll. Thank you. I'm just going to start down at this end. Jenny?
No.
Susan?
Aye.
Michael?
Nope.
Stubbin, no?
Aye.
Jones, yes? Brad?
No.
David?
Aye.
Nos have it. So, the vote is four, four to three. So, Brad, I'd like to come back to your motion to approve the agenda as printed. Motion made by Gerbi. Second? Michael, okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries seven zero. Scheduled reports, I'd like to invite our athletic department, Ashley and Jeff, if you'd like to please come up. And just make sure the green button's on. There you go. Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Mantha, the new athletic director.
And Jeff Pike.
We've got a presentation for you today, just to kind of show you about, all about Celine athletics, as well as to kind of show experiences that we have experienced in the past, sorry, thank you for that. I was standing away too far. In the past three months, yesterday marked my three month, and so, like I said, it's still fairly new, still a learning curve, but we are excited to be here, so thank you for this opportunity. Just a quick little intro of ourselves, because I know we're new to a lot of people. So, myself as mentioned, I'm Ashley Mantha. Previously, I was in Ann Arbor Public Schools. I was a PE and health teacher, and a golf coach for Boys and Girls Varsity for 12 years, and had a couple of years in the athletic office as well. Though that might have prepared me a little bit, it's been a steep learning curve, and we are excited to keep on learning, so.
And I'm Jeff Pike, and I taught here for 24 and two-thirds years, and the shift of the last three months has been great. It's been eye-opening. It feels like time has definitely flown, so learning a lot and looking forward to continue to learn.
We also have Tiffany Harris here with us as well today. She, like I said, we have a brand-new athletic department, all three of us, so we just want to make sure everyone is acknowledged. She was a Celine High School alumni herself. She has four students in the system right now. I believe in all the buildings. So, she's got a grand pulse on all elementary, middle, and high school. And she had previous to this, she was Director of Finance in a local print shop, so we're very excited to have her part of our team as well.
So, some of the staff members that you'll see at all of our events that we want to make sure we point out that are part of our team besides Tiffany, Ashley, and myself. The coaches, of course, first and foremost. Without the coaches at all levels, high school all the way through middle school, athletics would not be what it is. We also are lucky to have trainers on site for our sporting events, and Mickey and Jackie have been around, and if you've been to sporting events, you've seen Mickey and Jackie. They put in a ton of work and a lot of hours. We just added Allison, and we're excited to have Allison onboard as well. Steve Garlic and John Heller are two folks that, again, if you've been to events, you've seen them both. They take tickets, they help with security, they do announcements, they do scoring. In fact, they're running the soccer game tonight while we're here, so we literally couldn't do it without them. Officer Gasaway from Pittsfield Township, and we have other Pittsfield Township officers who are also providing security. And certainly for larger events like football games, we have many officers, so it's an important part of the team. And then our administrative team, both in middle school and high school. At events large and small, they are an important presence, so we thank them for their support.
Thank you so much. So, we just kind of want to, what we're envisioning for going forward is a new department, and we want to make sure that's clear out there, too. We do want to provide an opportunity for all students to participate, to fully develop their academic as well as their athletic potential. We're looking at that sportsmanship, character building, all those things that sports can just bring to the full student. Our biggest why for our department is all about the students, right? Safety, support, and educational athletics. So, we're just making sure that is very clear. That is our foundation. We know there's been a lot of leadership changes in the athletic department, so our big priority is consistency and reinforcement of a positive culture. So, that is our big priority as mentioned for our numerous high school and middle school programs. I know there's a lot of information, but there's a link there if you want to click on your own time that we are being proactive with our coaches already. Literally, month one, we set up a big meeting with all of our spring coaches, and that link right there is a slideshow of everything. We talked to our coaches. It was a good two-hour meeting, so I won't go over that with you right now, basically, is what I'm saying. But a lot of key things of what we are envisioning for our programs going forward are in that slideshow. But as Celine has grown into a top-notch program, those policies and the culture, you know, will have to necessarily be transformed to match that as well. Our department is working on those items to build a better community, and we'll be presenting those items to you guys in the near future, so.
All right, so I have a little interactive thing for you all here. It's been a little while since I've been teaching, so it's coming back, yeah. If you have a pen handy to answer this question, among the two universities and then our beloved high school and middle school, how many varsity and middle school sports are there at each of these institutions? So, wasn't that middle school and high school? Yeah. Yeah, we'll play Price is Right rules. That's fine. Yes, yes. Right. So, any guesses? Okay.
If a single, does it count as a single sport if there's a men's team and a women's team?
So, that'd be two. So, it was soccer, boys' soccer, girls' soccer. Great clarifying question.
That's good.
I'll just add, I'll just-
I smelled a trick.
I'll add a note that I'm gonna, I'm just gonna go out on a limb here and say that I think that the high school is going to win because I know that my son is involved in a sport that doesn't exist at one of those schools, so.
You might have been seen through the ruse here, yes.
So, yeah, I think this is indeed a trick question, right? So, I'm gonna guess. Here we go. I'm gonna say 38 for us and 19 apiece for the others.
I guessed an average. The coach goes first. I love that. I said 32, but I was trying to get a average, so I went for that perspective, I guess.
Fair enough.
As a non-sporty person, I'm gonna say 41 at each of the institutions, the higher ed, and slightly more for Celine.
Well, you all are on the pattern correctly. Michigan State has 25 varsity athletic programs. University of Michigan has 29.
Let's go Blue.
That doesn't necessarily mean anyone's better than the other, but just to clarify, right? Trying to be neutral here, so. And all of you correctly saw, not just for high school, 35 programs, but then adding in eight middle school programs as well. So, it shows we have a lot going on. We have a lot of students, we have a lot of staff, we have a lot of coaches, and not to say that we're on the level of Michigan State or U of M, but there is, there's a lot involved with athletics that we're learning a lot, so.
So, we're just gonna kind of break down each of these sport of fall, winter, and spring, just kind of quickly to get an idea of what these sports actually look like. It's amazing to talk to some students and parents that are like, I didn't even know we offered this activity kind of thing, so just kind of putting that out there. So, for the fall, we actually start in early August before school even starts. Like this upcoming year, it's August 8th, which is three weeks prior to school even starting, so a lot of people kind of miss on that. But we definitely have 12 fall sports. They are listed there. Cross-country, boys and girls. Cheer, sideline for the fall. Equestrian, field hockey, football, girls' golf. Boys and girls' rowing, also known as crew. Boys' soccer, swim and dive for girls. Tennis for boys, and volleyball are all in the fall. Over 500 student athletes or athletes participate in the fall with over 48 coaches in that season as well.
So, winter was the season that Ashley, Tiffany, and I joined basically halfway through the season, so it was a whirlwind, and then we started to look at a number of fall sports, and we were like, wow, that's going to be even more interesting. And so, with the sports that we have in the winter, boys and girls' basketball, boys and girls' bowling, competitive cheer, gymnastics, ice hockey, swim and dive, skiing, and wrestling. And though fewer athletes and fewer coaches, it was still a very busy and successful season.
One of the longest seasons by month, but hey. To finish off the spring, which we're in right now, we have 13 teams. We start early March. Those teams are baseball, boys' golf, girls' and boys' lacrosse, boys' and girls' rowing again, girls' soccer, softball, girls' tennis, track and field for boys and girls, and then girls' and boys' water polo. Once again, another big season of over 500 student athletes, and this time, our biggest season of coaches was 56 coaches and staff.
And last but certainly not least, middle school sports. We have a lot of middle school sports and a lot of little kids to get involved in the programs because then they come up and are obviously participating at the high school level. So, in fall, football, cross-country for boys and girls, and volleyball. In winter, boys and girls' basketball and wrestling. And then in spring, we have boys and girls' track. You can see the number of athletes that participated in the last year and in the current season for each of these sports as well. And then to point out again about coaches, 30 middle school coaches, and a lot of those are coaching multiple seasons. So, which is a little more rare at the high school, but it's pretty impressive to have that much commitment to coach middle school students in these sports. And then the totals for this, adding all this up, as far as the athletes, they're obviously multiple-sport athletes, so this does not mean 1,286 individual students, but 1,286 at the high school, 593 at the middle school, and then 131 different people are coaching at all levels across athletics.
I'll say one of the things that we learned, too, taking this on, though, there are other activities, other clubs, other sports, but they are not underneath our umbrella. There's community education, there's Lori Dawson in the clubs. So, a lot of the things you might be wondering, why isn't this listed here? These are just the 43 that we have the privilege to be overseeing. There are plenty of other opportunities as well. Like I said, there's just, this is what we are under control of, so. A typical week for us, joking aside, there is no typical day. There is no typical week, is what we are learning. There might be some similarities between certain days of, you know, officials, transportation, game scheduling, but when it comes down to it, every day looks different. So, we use this lovely picture. You can kind of somewhat see. We have a board of just how things are transitioning and changing. We like to send out that weekly schedule, so everyone's on the same page. I'm hoping, I'm sure, I kind of believe you all get it, but if not, please let me know. But we like to keep that more organized, as I said, because things change so much, especially in the springtime. I think we have, just alone this week, we have six new ones we have to schedule just because of yesterday's weather alone. On any given day, we have up to 19 events. Some days, there's only three or four, which, those are our breather days, so to speak. But days coming up like Wednesday, I believe, we have, you can see that long list of a But days coming up like Wednesday, I believe we have, you can see that long list of away and home kind of thing. So it keeps us very busy and on our toes. We have links here as well, if you'd like to click on those, that is our schedule for middle school and high school. So you can kind of get an example and see what a typical quote-unquote week might look like for the spring. We do have a facility practice scheduled there as well, so we like to keep all those moving pieces, puzzle pieces together. When you have only, we are blessed to have a beautiful facility, but even at that, there's so many teams fighting for the turf field, the pool, the weight room, the track. It is a puzzle piece of who has a game, who has a practice, weather, and all that. So it is a moving beast, so to speak, and we like to keep everyone in the know, so all of our coaches have access to this and we're on the same page, so. Some challenges that we have come across in our three months, which probably won't seem as surprised. This is not just a Celine issue, this is Michigan, United States for a lot of these. Any given day, those first couple weeks experience on a daily. Those bottom ones might be daily or weekly, but transportation, right? We can all, we're shortage of bus drivers, the times they want to go is, you know, when drop-off is for elementary or middle school or high school. So it's kind of hard, and it comes down to that liability of who drives to events. Is it parents, is it students, is it buses, vans? So we're coming into that daily of what time is the event and trying to figure that out. We also have umpires, officials, referees, that is one of our biggest concerns. Mr. Pike just kind of threw an article at me the other day where he said there was thirteen thousand officials a couple of years ago in Michigan, and now we're down to eight thousand just alone. So in the past two years, we've lost five thousand officials throughout Michigan, which is an inordinate amount kind of thing. So right now, our schedules are dictated by, can we get an official? Are we, it's not just about can we find an opponent, but can we actually have someone officiate for our games? That's one of our biggest things right now. This week alone, we wanted to play today, but there was no umps available kind of thing. So even though we had the facility, we might have a team, sometimes things are out of our control. Speaking of out of our control, mother nature has not been kind to us as we come here, and it's snowing this week, and tomorrow's not looking any prettier, unfortunately. So it's one of those things we're kind of realizing, we do the best we can, trying to support those students, give them opportunities, and try to find those places we can fit and reschedule items in the best safety way possible. We don't want to put five events back-to-back, obviously, that kind of thing. To go without coaches, more and more is being asked of our coaches. It's extremely hard to find and maintain good coaches. Not just, you know, they're mentoring, they're in charge of transportation, they're in charge of fundraisers. They have to be the, you know, first responder, safety person, amongst other things of just being a coach, so to speak. So it is one of those challenging things, it's not just a Celine issue, it's throughout Michigan and the United States, as I mentioned. I kind of briefly talked about the status of sports. We are learning ourselves the confusion of, just because a sport might be MHSAA, especially at the middle school, that doesn't necessarily mean we are in charge of it. It's one of those policies that we are looking into. For example, softball, tennis, swimming, cheer in the middle school. They're not under our control, but they are MHSAA. Community Ed does a great job running that, but when Monroe calls me to cancel softball yesterday, and I'm like, I'm not in charge of you, let me get you Ashley House, kind of thing. There's a lot of different moving pieces, as mentioned, to get this organized. But we're trying to look into making that more of an efficient going forward, so. And then sportsmanship, like I said, we're trying to build a positive culture, for fans, for parents, for students, whether away or home, just being that's good citizen of Celine community, so.
So lastly, just our list of thank yous, sort of as we started with, with all the people that are key parts to this athletic machine that we have. But student athletes, all the time that they put in, coaches, the time that they put in, and parents and volunteers. So everyone is often asked to do multiple things for their kids who are participating in sports, whether they're varsity or a club. Buildings and grounds, just the idea of these people that are preparing sites. We typically don't see them and all the work that they are doing so that our kids can go out and enjoy. And the custodians that are there to offer support and to clean. Trainers, God forbid, someone needs a trainer, they are there, and they are very intelligent and very, very helpful, hopefully with just minor things, bumps and bruises. The game workers that I talked about, our transportation that we talked about. That's obviously, again, as Ashley said, something that's a difficult thing for Celine and everyone, and is a factor in what we do. The administration and teachers, among this list, I should have included and highlighted as well, the marching band. What would a Friday night football game be without the marching band? So Mr. Lantman and the two-hundred-plus members of that. So those types of groups that make an athletic event are all very, very important to us. And then just the community and the board and all the support that we get for something like this. That Ashley went to a conference last month, and they called us, I think it was a positive thing, they called us Celine University. And it's because we have so much going on and so many things, and thanks to all your support for that.
Can we all get t-shirts that say Celine University? I'm kidding, so-
Do we want University of Celine or Celine University?
University of Celine, please. No, 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 no. So before we get into the questioning, I'm putting my Lenny Beck on to represent one of our wonderful programs that you cover. You know, before we open it up to questions, and I'm gonna call on Julian in case he wants to go first, because he's our student athlete. I've heard such wonderful things from staff and from families about the, and Tiffany, I know you're back there, too. The team coming in and really digging in and looking at things procedurally and getting organized. It's clear, if you look at that whiteboard, that you're getting organized. So thank you for really digging it at a really, really busy time. Julian, do you have any questions, comments for our-
I don't have, I don't have any questions, but thank you, guys. I know the hockey team brings a fair share of problems.
I appreciate your honesty.
I mean, we're, I don't think, well, we're a club sport, but then, like, that doesn't mean we're not calling these guys all the time. I always see, like, I always saw, like, my coach running out of the room, like, oh, shoot, I gotta call, I gotta call these guys. And I'm like, dude, we have a game in like thirty minutes. And everything was always resolved in the end. So thank you, guys, I appreciate the work you're doing, and I'm sure every single athlete does. We got the best jerseys, the best fields, sweetest-looking school, so. It's a, a whole lot of pride comes with, comes with Celine, so thank you, guys.
So we do have a sweet-looking school, I agree, Julian. So I would say, first of all, I echo President Stebbin's thoughts, and we appreciate your efforts, we appreciate everything you're doing, okay? If you had to identify in our programs and our facilities, what are our, like, if you had to come up with like a top three, a top five, what are our most pressing needs and/or priorities? Like, I know you've listed a whole bunch of challenges, but what would you want us and our community to know? This is really important to us. That's a big question.
So with the transition of a lot of different ADs, some things have fallen through the cracks, whether just because of new people coming in, you take on a job. We're finding things that should have been updated, kind of thing, virgin incidents, the gymnastics floor. It's twenty years old, I think, like eighteen years, it should be replaced every eight to ten years. So you talk about safety of students, kind of thing, we're, though we're a fairly new high school, I think it's nineteen years, twenty years? Twenty, thank you. Even though it's fairly new, no upkeep has really been done to certain equipment and certain larger items. I know track, kind of thing, for instance. We're really excited, but what is it, wheelchair athletes are not able to participate in track. We're not really ADA appropriate for the back-throwing area, it's all grass. So certain things like that, we're realizing that we're gonna be getting into and fixing and going forward, bringing things and ideas, as I mentioned, towards you, for safety and support of educational athletics. Like I said, the student, the main reason is can we support the students, so. Anything else that you- Scoreboards, thank you. Back up to, kind of thing, baseball, softball, I think the gym one went down a couple of weeks ago. Last night, the main field, actually, we did do a computer reboot last night, right ten minutes before a game, got that going. But it's one of those things, just certain things, just because there's been a transition so often of different leadership, that some things have just naturally, you know, unmistakably just dropped through the cracks. And we're just kind of finding those things and trying to fix the big ones, the priority ones as we go.
I know our community is tremendous, and they've supported us tremendously, and I'm sure they'll continue to do so, so, but thank you for sharing those things.
Thank you.
So as I was looking at the list of your sports, my daughter, who Jeff knows, graduated last year, and she fell into that category of varsity sport but paid for with club fees, so still tied to the athletic department, but, you know, somewhat subsidized with club fees. So, you know, I know this might be a ballpark, but how many of those types of clubs are you supporting in addition to those teams that you're, I mean, is it a dozen, is it two dozen? So like, when you, when you put the numbers up there, it's maybe even double, I don't know.
I'd say nine to eleven right now that I'm aware of in my head, as far as- Yes, kind of you categorize. So I know, like, because rowing is two seasons, so if you count it twice versus just once as a team, kind of thing, that's what I'm saying, the range. But there are multiple teams that are in that. I know some people use the word "club." I know we're trying to get away from the word "club," because then Lori Dawson comes into play with, like, debate, Quiz Bowl, ping pong. So we're trying to not use the word "club," because then some teams are getting confused by, well, you're, can I get a varsity letter? Can your, where's my money, so to speak? You're like, hey, you're not ours, like, you gotta go see Community Ed, you gotta do whatever. So out of those thirty-five high school sports, I'd say a good ten that are not non-funded varsity sports. That's kind of, that's kind of, so we have the funded varsity and the non-funded varsity, it's kind of the terminology we've been using to kind of keep our headspace straight when we have conversations.
That makes sense, that makes a lot of sense.
And that's one of the things we're talking about, things we need to improve, is the criteria of what teams we take on to be a non-funded varsity versus a funded varsity, and that's something we definitely want to work on, because we have, I think, week one, I had three or four teams come at me, I shouldn't say come at me, asked to be included, kind of thing. It was boys' volleyball, dance, women's hockey, all was, like, they were just like, hey, new person, let's start a team, kind of thing. I'm all for opportunities, but at some point, we can't have sixty teams, because there's only the three of us, kind of thing. So it's one of those things that we're gonna be talking about of going forward procedurally, what can we do to make sure everyone has participation in their, in their sport, whether it's funded through us or another means.
And, you know, it sounds like you have the, a lens for inclusivity, too, and thinking about what that means and-
Right.
Beyond just the Title IX requirements, so. A couple of things, just, one thing that I'll just note here is that one thing that COVID has brought to, like, a positive thing, I guess I'll say, is the amount of training that can be done via Zoom. So I know that someone in our household did umpire training via Zoom during COVID, and so if there are people who are interested in becoming referees, umpires, and officials, that might be an avenue that might be a little bit more accessible to people than maybe the traditional training that had been done before. So I would definitely encourage that. I will say that the person in my household, I won't out them so that you don't call them right away, because I'm not sure they're ready for that, but- But learned, but decided to go through the training so that they understood the game. So when people were like, why did the ref make that call? Now they're in the stands at the college game saying, because the foot and this, and, you know, like, all the little intricacies. So if you have a child playing a sport, that would be a great way to get involved and to know intimately what's happening. I think, I think the other thing, too, is thinking about, thinking about August eighth and just how that, like, one of the things that I think comes up repeatedly throughout the summer months is, when is the dead week? When is the first day of the sport? Those types of things, so I'm glad that you mentioned August eighth, and then if that, if there's any social media things that we can send out to notify parents who are scheduling vacations, for example, they like to plan those during the dead week, and it sometimes shifts depending on when the Fourth of July is, it seems, so. So those are all important things, but we just appreciate the work that you're, that you're both doing. I knew that, I didn't know Ashley, but her reputation in Ann Arbor was top-notch, so glad to have you here. And I knew that when Mr. Pike was joining, joining the team, that we would have someone who had just a level of compassion and just genuine, genuine knowledge of child development and how to support those kids. And I think that that's been evident in some of the more recent things that we've encountered. So I appreciate knowing that you're there, I knew that kids were being taken care of, so thank you so much.
I'll say, Jenny, the dead week is July fourth through the tenth, if you want to. We sent it out to our coaches, and hopefully they were gonna pass it on to their, but I will verbalize it to you as well right now. It's always around July fourth, as you mentioned. Plan it now, right?
Just a quick question about training for coaches. Can you share a bit about that, just what types of training they receive, or what you're thinking about for the future is needed?
For sure. Right now, so right now, there's different levels, MHSAA has requirements, amongst, Celine can add additional requirements to it. So right now, our varsity coaches are held to the highest standards for MHSAA. And Celine is kind of held on to that, where they need to be CPR, first aid, AED-trained, kind of thing, that's just varsity. We like to make sure all of our coaches are actually certified. Nurse Karen plays a, like, important role in that, because she offers so many free sessions for our coaches. Normally, it's forty dollars elsewhere, but Nurse Karen set up a session like two weeks ago for our spring coaches to recertify. So as we say, first responders, I mean, luckily we have trainers, but some of our rowing, golf, hockey, you know, they're off-campus, so to speak. So having that first responder is amazing. New coaches hired after two thousand and sixteen have to be CAP one and CAP two trained, which is Coach Advancement Program through MHSAA. So basically, it's teaching coaches how to be coaches, to simplify it. Once again, like, varsity coaches are held to a higher standard, but we want to make sure that we are bringing those to, as well. There's also a rules meeting that is required for each coach. With that, MHSAA runs it, so you can add your own to it, but there's part of mental health that goes with it, the Be Nice Program, as well as sports, like concussion protocol, safety protocol, and then obviously your sports-specific rules to make sure a coach actually knows what they're doing. So it's, we don't just take any, just person off the street, so to speak. Obviously, there's also fingerprinting and background check and interviews and so forth as well, too. So it's, it's not just like, ooh, I want to go coach today. There's a lot more to it than just walking off the street, so to speak, if that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just some follow-up to Candace's question, do they receive safe sport training?
So certain ones, it's not a requirement for certain sports, it is, so it's not as a Celine hole, that's a great question. It's something we're definitely looking into as far as the heat index, concussion protocol. Certain things are not required, that doesn't mean it should not be required for us, if that kind of makes sense. There's MHSAA where I have to attest, and there's just generally being a good coach and support of the system. So I think for us, we were actually looking into that, because there are courses through the NFHS, National Federation of High School Sports, that offer these courses, so it's a great re-
I've done one in the past, there-
There's so many of them, kind of like, there's a heat index, cold, you know, water, concussion, like I said, so, safety at the core.
Yeah. Oh, Steve's taking a little picture. I had a couple of questions. The first thing I wanted to do is obviously reinforce your thanks to a lot of people, especially behind the scenes, that folks don't hear from a lot. It takes a lot to make these programs hum, so thank you to that list and more, and adding Karen on to that for sure. And I've seen those trainers in action, and I'm very, very impressed. I saw Jackie and Mickey in action once, so really appreciate that. My first question is about social media. So I know there's been recent discussion around who owns Facebook, Insta, you know, Twitter accounts. Can you talk a little bit about, like, what's the state of the union now and where you'd kind of like to see it go?
So as someone who is not really familiar or good on social media, this is a real challenge for me. But what we found is, across all of our programs, it seems that it's either a coach, or the coach designates someone to run the account. And so what we've kind of learned so far is we need to kind of make them universal. They're all named different things, some of the names don't match up with the team name. High school sports are supposed to be boys and girls labeled, and some are labeled as men's and women's, for example. So subtle things like that, that we would need to change and to try to unify, and not to micromanage accounts, but if it's associated with salinity schools, we should have some access to it. And we're not going to be looking over their shoulder as they're putting stuff out there, but there should be some safeguards put in place. So that's for social media. And then Ashley earlier alluded to our website. Our website, we've struggled with, we're both pretty computer savvy, and so we're looking to try a different system that would allow us to update things much more easily. If you look at celinehornets.com now, you'll find some sports are really updated, and there's a lot of scores and everything. And there's others that, it like schedules empty. We've figured out how to put in rosters, but for no rhyme or reason can we figure out why some sports don't have any access and others do. So we're looking for, by next fall, to have a new system in place for that. So to try to get a handle on all the electronic things, to put information out, is absolutely the goal.
Thank you, I think it's important for several reasons, right? I mean, you know, rosters, recruiting, you know, whatever, but I think it's mostly important for preserving the integrity, the brand, and the safety and reputation of salinity schools overall, and being able to, who knows, step in in some sort of an emergency or what have you, and having that control, so that sounds really good to me. You touched on my second question, I had three. My second question was around your- Um, you touched on my second question. I had three. Um, my second question was around your, um, uh, where do you go from here with regards to MHSAA versus community ed and middle school sports, since our sixth graders are CE and seventh and eighth generally go under a different pay to play versus sixth grade, depending on the sport. Um, one thing that I did notice during COVID is different protocols coming down from MHSAA versus coming out from the district, coming, you know, it was, the differences were highlighted, I, I, I think. So if you can just give, um, also it goes to, um, coaching, um, pay and, and, um, uh, training. There's all sorts of things in, in there. So if you can talk a little bit about the middle school dilemma, I guess, that's what I'd be interested in.
That's a great word for it because we are.
It's like a book title.
That's, yes. I'm glad Laura's here too. Laura has been a great help too. I was like, is this one of our sports? She's like, yep, okay. We got it. But, um, I think like you mentioned, there's different protocols and we're finding that too, which we actually ran into track was a great example. You have sixth graders running with seventh and eighth grade track kind of thing. Sixth grade is community ed in theory. They don't require physicals for sixth grade. But they're going to run with seventh and eighth graders who do have physicals. So we just kind of made it a blanket, you need a physical because you are running with an MHS A team. So we kind of made a safety decision of like, you should have a physical. I don't like, one of those things of just back at the core of it, safety first. Um, so when we did registration, uh, with Coach Jags and all the group kind of thing, we made sure he was on top notch. He made sure all two hundred plus boys and girls, which is, it's amazing how many students come out for that. But, um, so just kind of like, we, we saw that firsthand of that there was different protocol. We were very confused that physicals weren't required. Um, look, going forward, we do want to make sure that that is something that we look for, for all of our middle school. Um, definitely talking to Ashley and Brian, um, to make sure we're trying to figure out who is doing what. And I've, I know it's one of those things that we need to bring forward to the board for approval when we do make changes. So we are looking to do that because right now in my head, and Jeff said, there is no rhyme or reason of certain sports that are community ed versus ours versus clubs kind of things. There's certain things that just, if it's MHS A, it should be with us kind of thing. But sometimes, you know, or is it, should there be a middle school AD kind of thing? Should it be a, a different structure, so to speak? Um, so it is something that is on our radar and we are working for, before the summer, we will have an idea of what we'd like to go forward with.
It's, it's a, it's an issue that's been inherited. It's not, it's nothing that you created.
It's one of those, it's one of those things.
This has been going on for a while. Yeah. Um, my last question is around the importance of sports psychology and, um, strength and conditioning in all sports uh, to negate injury, but also to promote, uh, positive mental health, uh, for our student athletes. Um, we all read things that are happening in, in college athletics and, uh, want to ensure that these students are well taken care of while they're at home here. What, what, um, what does sports psych and, um, strength and conditioning play now? And where do you see both of those going in the future?
So I think right now it's very individualized based on the, the program, right? Each sport is doing something different or nothing kind of thing. Um, we are looking into the Be Nice Program. I know I briefly mentioned a minute ago, it is run through MHSAA. Uh, we presented it to our spring coaches in our meeting. I know we didn't show the slides, but it is in there as well. Um, it is something that we're going to be looking forward to, to do a blanket across all high school programs. Um, we're looking into the middle school as well, but right now it's a high school specific curriculum. Um, so mental health specifically, um, that is definitely something we're going to be starting with. Um, I'm hopefully going to be looking into, looking at social workers and other people that can support psychologists that might be able to come in and have those sessions, those conferences, so to speak, with um, our group. We are looking for the fall to have a student athletic, uh, sorry, a student athlete meeting with all of our students. So it'd be nice to bring in those speakers kind of thing to talk about. I know like when I was a coach and a player as well, we used to have those, um, speaks, you know, keynote speakers come in and talk about different things. And I think that'd be an awesome opportunity to do that as well. Um, as far as the physical goes, um, I know we have some amazing strength and conditioning coaches right now um, that are doing spring, falls, winter. Um, they rotate basically, they coach other sports as well. So I know that they are available as well. Um, there's, even if you don't want to use them, there are other times too that that facility is open. Um, we actually are updating it tomorrow for maintenance, well, for safety reasons too. It's one of those things is, as I mentioned back to earlier of things have just been outdated and for safety reasons need to be maintained and up kept. So, um, I said, uh, Coach Welton and, uh, Coach Rock do a great job with that program. And so we're happy to have them doing the conditioning program, as you said, proact, um, proactively preventing injury, especially those ACLs, right?
Thank you. Sorry, I always have a lot of athletics questions. Well, actually, it's been a while since we had athletics here, so it's very exciting.
Happy to be here.
It's a lot going on. Yeah, Brad.
All right, I have one more item. Um, first of all, I, I, I'd be remiss, I didn't mention it earlier, like my, my own children have been the benefit of tremendous coaches and people that are so dedicated to programs. Like, I think about like, uh, you know, my kid, like they extended the cross country season to take our kids to Kentucky. Like, I mean, like, that show, they didn't have to do it. And so I.
I don't think they were here. You should tell them what that was.
What's that? For nationals? So for, for cross country nationals, right? So like they do things to go above and beyond for our, for our students, right? And they really need a level that is extraordinary to me. So I want to make sure that I, I say that out loud. Now you got me thinking about player fees just now for a second. So I want to ask you about, I don't want, I don't want player fees to ever be a barrier for any student to be able to participate in Celine athletic programs. So can you just speak quick briefly to what types of supports we have in place so that every student who wants to participate in our athletic programs can?
Um, I do, I do know that, uh, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch status, uh, get a, uh, their fee covered for that. Uh, we also have, I know we set up a few years ago at the high school for students who have needs for anything, not just pay to play fees, but calculators and things like that. There are, there are, uh, fees to be accessed that, or funds to be accessed for something like that. But. Uh, I know it's through the counselors, um, so that, at least at the high school. And so something certainly we should look into further and make sure that is a thing. Because if someone doesn't qualify for free and reduced lunch, but like you said, we don't want it to be a barrier. We want anyone who wants to play any sport be able to have access to it. It's a great question.
Um, I don't really have too many questions because, um, there were some pretty great questions and responses, but, um, I want to thank you. Um, you all look like you've been doing this for years. So keep doing what you're doing and I'm excited to see, um, all of the improvements that, that you're already, um, thinking about in the future. So thank you.
All right, thank you. You probably have like nineteen events tonight, so we'll, we'll let you go. Thank you so much.
It's a breather. We only have five.
That means you get to eat dinner tonight.
Before ten o'clock.
I know about that.
Thank you so much for this.
Excellent. Thank you both and thank you Tiffany. Um, we do not have any action items on our agenda for this evening, so I'm going to move on to our only discussion item this evening. Um, Committee Chair, Vice President Michael McVeigh with policy.
Not really a discussion item yet. Uh, Policy Committee met this afternoon at five PM to discuss several revisions including, uh, to policies, including policy twenty-three forty, for those of you following along at home, field and district sponsored trips uh, to accommodate the, uh, approval of field trips, especially those that are overnight or out of state. We think we've got some language that we're ready to put in the consent agenda next week. Uh, next meeting. Uh, we also reviewed several Neola updates, uh, that we have recommended for the next consent agenda. And some of those revolve language around dress codes and others dealing with scintillating matters such as grant funds, cost principles and procurement. Just. Finally, we examined policies with name compliance officers and we hope to bring some language. Once we do some homework and discuss with legal, uh, this new language that we're going to propose. So that ends the report from the Policy Committee. So we hope to have, uh, something for you at the next meeting, uh, in your packet.
Thanks. Any questions or comments for Michael or the Policy Committee? All right. Great work. Um, moving on to our consent agenda, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all. Oh, I skipped right over it. Um, because I wrote something on top of it. So let's go to administration updates. Absolutely. Steve?
Okay, I am going to provide a COVID nineteen update. And what I wanted to do was read the, uh, email, uh, that I sent out earlier in the day and also a correction that was needed to be made. And then I'll provide some, um, commentary under each section. So. It started with the SAS community. I'm writing today to update you about an uptick in COVID nineteen cases that we were monitoring throughout the district. And I did want to point out that, um, you know, the athletic department mentioned how important Karen Hervey is, uh, a district nurse to, you know, helping with their programs. Um, she's instrumental in helping to develop our COVID plans and protocols. And we take a lot of guidance with her. We consult with her on a daily basis. And, um, certainly as we're moving through this uptick in increased number of COVID cases, we're in constant consultation with her and just really thank her and Wendy and, uh, other nursing support that we have because um, it's a lot and they're doing a tremendous job. And we just want to make sure that we are acknowledging that. Um, so we go on to talk about tracking COVID nineteen cases. And as many of you are aware, we discontinued the use of the COVID nineteen dashboard effective April fifteenth. It's no longer part of the cycle of guidance from either the Washington County Health Department or Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. However, that doesn't mean we are, you know, we're not tracking, we're still tracking COVID nineteen cases very closely. Every building has a tracking sheet that's updated daily. Based on our most recent data, we're experiencing this uptick in positive cases. The increase represents less than one percent of student staff population overall. However, there are several cases clustered in certain classrooms resulting in outbreak situations. So that's not to downplay that, um, we, we, we certainly have increased COVID activity. It was just to, um, show that the totality of cases is not, uh, in the same vein as some similar outbreaks or COVID activity that we had, for example, coming off of winter break last year, we had way more, uh, significant number of cases. Now, we're still talking about a very contagious virus and in some of these outbreak situations have, have resulted in that, in that. There's, there's certainly no question about it. So as it relates to outbreak in classrooms, we, we were talking, we, we stated, when there are multiple, multiple positive cases within a classroom, it's difficult to determine if the classroom itself is a source of spread or the cases are related to outside exposure. Um, whether that's connected with family members, extracurriculars and so forth. Regardless of origin, our goal is to prevent further spread. For this reason, we continue to follow the Washington County Health Department guidance regarding outbreak management and notification. I think this is a real key. I've been trying to be very, very consistent in messaging throughout the year and I know everybody has not been happy necessarily about whatever direction the county health department has, um, been providing in terms of guidance. But I have tried to be very consistent that we're going to follow that guidance. And this is a case now as well. We are, we are working to follow um, that guidance. Um, when we define outbreak or cluster, uh, an outbreak or cluster is defined by the Washington County Health Department as three or more cases within a classroom group or ten percent or more of the class. We currently, and this was as of this morning when this message was written, we currently have five classrooms in the elementary school study that meet the criteria of an outbreak, including two that recently attended fifth grade camp. And so again, Washington County guidance on how to do this. Um, the issue with guidance that we've been experiencing all year though, is that it is changing on a regular basis. In fact, we had a change within twenty-four hours of some recent guidance that we gave, which meant a corrected email that needed to be sent out, uh, by me this afternoon, which I'll get into in just a minute. So as it relates to eighth grade Washington DC trip, uh, in addition, we're experiencing increasing cases related to this most recent eighth grade Washington DC trip where students and staff were together for multiple days, traveling and sharing rooms, et cetera. We're following the Washington County Health Department outbreak guidance for this situation as well. Now, when we get to what, what does that mean following the guidance? So here's the protocol of outbreak situations. Protocol for out, a protocol for outbreak situations as outlined in the summary of guidance for K twelve schools, which was a link that was provided to the community. It requires that all individuals be considered close contacts and includes the following. One, that there would be monitoring of symptoms for ten days. Two, in school or home tested, testing is recommended for these close contacts. And three, and this is the one that we had guidance change on us. Three is masking remains required during outbreak clusters for all close contacts, even those who have had COVID nineteen in the last ninety days. This is in accordance with our current guidelines on page five, when they say our current guidelines, so it's the Washington County Health Department guidelines. And it helps to keep students in school and in person. So yesterday, we had our administration contact the Washington County Health Department spoke to the Health Director about this guidance because it came into question that if you had had COVID within ninety days, it was highly recommended to wear masks and not required. We then published that information this morning. Since then, the county health department sent an email to the entire county clarifying that, that in discussions within their department, they have confirmed that actually all people will be needing to require masking in outbreaks or clusters, even those who have had COVID in the last ninety days. So that is an example of us needing to be flexible and respond to the guidance, which we, um, did this afternoon. As it relates to the upcoming sixth grade Chicago trip, uh, as it relates to the upcoming sixth grade Chicago trip, we're ready to go. Yet it's important to know that all school trips are optional and families and guardians need to do what is comfortable for them as it relates to sending students on school related trips. For this trip, we strongly recommend that students, staff and parents take a COVID nineteen test twenty-four hours in advance of the trip and monitor for symptoms and test after travel. Further, masking on buses will be highly recommended. Based on our experience with the DC trip, we are offering these guidelines to help support the health of all of our students. Please note that if your child becomes ill during the trip, you'll need to pick them up as they won't be allowed to travel home on the trip buses. If your student is sick at the time of departure, please keep them home. Now, a point of discussion will be in the future is that, you know, in, in school district, as we take trips in the future, because it's still abundantly clear in talking to the vast majority of people about school trips, seeing that they're really valuable part of the student's experience. And that will be fifth grade camp, Chicago or Toronto as it was before, and the Washington DC trip. Yes, there can be those potential discussions about, okay, does that mean that in the future it needs to be mandatory COVID tests before you would go? Um, mask required on buses. That, those could be future discussions, but they haven't been up to this point. Uh, largely because we're still following the guidance that doesn't say that that's what happens. I mean, obviously we've recently seen the, um, you know, with airplanes, not, not requiring masking, uh, not requiring testing within, you know, the United States, for example. And so we're going to have to talk more about that, um, moving forward. But for this most recent, or this upcoming trip, this is coming right around the corner. And we have already published all the guidelines to our parents and students and therefore, you know, we're moving forward with this capacity. Simply providing that there is an uptick in cases and making sure people understand this. And that there are some other things that we are highly recommending to do to protect, um, students, staff, uh, before, um, heading on to this trip. The next section is monitoring your child's health. As a reminder, please keep your student home if they're experiencing COVID nineteen or other illness symptoms and have them tested and or reach out to their physician for further guidance. In the event illness occurs during standardized testing windows such as M-Step, which we're in, please know that testing can be rescheduled if needed. While testing is an important assessment tool for students, we must continue to keep health and safety at the forefront of our decision to send students to school or keep them home. We've worked hard to make sure that we have ideal testing conditions here at school and the process begins with kids coming to school healthy and ready to test. So the bottom line is, yes, the testing environment is important, but health is more important. And we would rather have parents be, and guardians erring on the side of caution to keep kids home, even during that testing window versus sending them and potentially, um, creating spread for any illness, whether it's cold, flu, COVID and so forth. Uh, the next part is that this free at home COVID nineteen tests that are available. We have this backpack program and we have many, many, many tests to give out and we are encouraging it. So we talked about in addition, we still have free at home tests available to families through the MDHHS, MDHHS, yep. Backpack testing program. No registration or reporting, uh, of results is required. If you're interested, please complete the opt-in form and then we provided a link because we, we have lots of tests to give out. It's a good way for parents to help, um, manage COVID activity with, within their own homes. As it relates to operationalizing COVID nineteen procedures at school, wanted to make sure that this part was stressed in that. Um, and I'll read this and then I'll talk a little bit more about it. Operationalizing COVID nineteen procedures as we move towards endemic status is important for all schools. We do anticipate peaks and valleys in positive cases as we move into the next year and future years. Our focus will continue to be the health and safety of our students and staff while we learn to live with COVID nineteen being. while we learn to live with COVID-19 being among the communicable diseases that we manage in the school setting. I think that's the case here. It's really unfortunate that we're seeing a spike right now. I know that many of us were concerned, myself included, that this would happen right when we got back two weeks after spring break, and so I know there was that, oh, some relief not seeing that, but now we are going through one of these peaks, and it really is unfortunate. But in conversations that we're having with District Nurse Hervey and our administrators is, we anticipate the school year looking like this next year as well. I mean, we're in a spot where we have a really high vaccination rate across the county, and, you know, the county was doing a very good job largely with masking when it was required, and obviously, our students were and staff as well, but there is this signaling of how are we going to respond to more of an endemic approach like what now, how we're currently operating with flu and some other communicable diseases. So, I just wanted to make sure that, that I was able to impress upon those points tonight and provide some commentary. I know that was a bit lengthy.
Thank you. Important information. Anything else? I'm just kidding. All right, excellent. Julianne, did you have a report tonight you'd like to do?
I actually do not. We heard students, COVID update, athletic update, kind of covered normally what I, what I tend to pick up.
You're covered. How are, are you getting apps for the board representative position, or do you know?
All right.
Teresa says yes, I see a nod. Excellent.
We have five that we're getting ready to send to you.
Excellent. All right, I know those are due this week, so...
That's new information, man, that sounds great.
Julianne's on it. Thank you for reviewing those ahead of time, we appreciate it. Any trustees who have any updates tonight? Yeah, Jenny?
I just wanted to take a minute, over the last, well, several months, but especially over the last month or two, the DEI AC has been just really attending to a lot of, a lot of goals that they had set earlier in the year, and to survey responses from the community. And, and earlier in the year, as we were observing these meetings, we heard a lot of just frustration that, that because the committee had been through so many different kind of iterations, like it seemed like almost every time it moved kind of up a level, it was, it was almost a setback to the work, because they had to kind of reformulate some of the, some of the structures and procedures and those kinds of things. And, and just being able to participate, to observe the meetings over the last several months, it feels like a lot of action is happening, and especially as it relates to supporting teachers and schools so that they can support the students who are in the school. So, I'm just really thankful for, for the work that's coming out of that committee, and these are volunteers who are spending hours, countless hours, to make sure that we get this right for, for students. So, I just want to acknowledge the work that they're doing and appreciate their efforts.
All right, I have two things. One, I just wanted to share with my fellow board members that there is an event tomorrow evening that the US Department of Education is hosting. It's called From Recovery to Thriving: How the American Rescue Plan is Supporting America's Students, and it will bring together a number of districts, and they'll be sharing some good examples of just what districts have been doing to support students in recovering from the pandemic, and share some great examples of work. So, I participated in the summit that they did back in the fall, I forget exactly when it was, but it was actually really good. The presentations were good, there were great examples, so just wanted to share that. And, next board meeting, I will unfortunately not be able to be here. I will be traveling for work, so just wanted to make that known here.
Great. Thanks for the heads up. Brett?
I have a quick acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge and thank all individuals who were involved with this week's trips to Washington DC and fifth-grade camp. I'm fortunate to have a 14 and 11-year-old who are able to participate in those things, and when I think about my life experiences, as a, as a student, I have fond memories of when I went to Toronto, and when I was able to go to Camp Store, and those are things that carry, I carry with me for my whole life. And, and so, I know those things don't just happen, right? There's tremendous planning that goes into effect with all those things, and I want to thank everybody involved with those trips, and I know that we're dealing with some, some things that are there, but everybody's banding together, and we're trying to get things right, and we're trying to figure it out, and I appreciate the efforts of all involved. I really do.
On April 21st, Superintendent Lott and I attended the WISD budget presentation, and we're going to be sharing information like we did last year with you. Our board needs to approve or disapprove of the budget, and a lot of times, we can also approve but make notes or comments if we, if we see fit. So, we're looking forward to that. As soon as we get the slide presentation, Dr. Lott and I will meet and pick the best slides to share.
Great. Any other comments, updates? Susan?
Yes, one thing about the DEI Advisory Committee. I'm excited that they're currently working with administration to create a DEI director position, which hopefully will be posted soon, and hope that that's coming along, so I'm super excited about that. And I would, oh, sorry, lost it. I would like to make a statement in my board update. Thank you for all of those who've reached out regarding your very real concerns of the COVID-19 outbreaks occurring across our district. As someone who is elected to represent this community, I value hearing from our constituents. When I, as your public official, am approached by many of our constituents with questions and concerns, especially when it impacts multiple people in the community, it is my duty to assure that this is addressed publicly. I'm disappointed that board members were not given the opportunity tonight to ask questions and ask for any clarity that may have come up from our constituents that were not answered.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? All right. Moving forward to item 11, the consent agenda. The following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. These items will not be read aloud, but will continue to be listed out individually in the meeting, in the minutes for this meeting. I'd like to please entertain a motion to authorize the listed items as part of our consent agenda.
Motion.
Brad and support Miller. Brad or Candace, you want that one? Okay, all right, thank you very much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. In closing, Steve, items on our next agenda?
Yeah, two reports, one about the millage renewal and bond update, and the second is going to be a teaching and learning update.
All right, teaching and learning.
Yep, got that. And millage renewal bond update. Okay, thank you. Now is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda for a future meeting. Because we have two, I will read our public comment statement. The presiding officer is guided by the rules set forth in PO 167.3, which has been reprinted on the public comment form collected this evening. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, or student. Secretary Jones has our yellow and red card, so at, you have three minutes. At 30 seconds left, she'll show the yellow card, and at three minutes, she'll show the red card, so if you could just complete your thought, that would be great. First, we have Catherine Kelly Alberti. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
I've never said, I've never said anything other than Catherine Kelly, so...
Thank you.
Excellent. Parent of a Celine student, whenever you're ready.
Of three students, thank you.
Thank you.
We love our Celine schools, and we have many things to be thankful for, and many things to be proud of. One of these things are the science, technology, engineering, and math teams. We call them STEM teams or STEAM teams. Celine STEAM teams include robotics, Science Olympiad, Destination Imagination, Girls Who Code, and Math Counts. STEAM teams support every point on the Celine compass and learner profile. STEAM teams teach collaboration, communication, critical thinking, ethics, business, budgeting, community service, and global connections. STEAM teams work synergistically with the South and West Washington Consortium classes, such as marketing, computer-aided design, electronics, engineering, robotics, and the electrical and mechanical and building trades. STEAM teams build upon and add to the K-12 science curriculum. Science teams provide hands-on learning and problem-solving experiences. STEM teams or STEAM teams are inclusive, and we are open to all students. Nobody, there are no tryouts, and nobody gets cut from our teams. Historically, STEM teams or STEAM teams were started and led by parent volunteers with no or minimal support. We're very grateful to Dr. Lott, who started working with the STEM teams a couple of years ago, to incorporate our teams into the school's framework. We're also grateful to Mr. Raff for his recent work with our teams. While the STEAM teams are immensely beneficial to the students who participate, we cannot ignore the overall science experience of our K-12 students. In last year's M-Step, only 40% of our third graders and 43% of our eighth graders scored at the proficient or advanced levels. That means over half of Celine's third and eighth graders are only partially proficient or not proficient at all in science. These scores make Celine average in the state of Michigan. Michigan is below average in the country for science and math. The United States scores below the global average for science and math. Every Celine student needs to be science-literate as consumers of technology, to join the workforce, to navigate healthcare, and to actively participate in this technological world. When additional resources become available to our district, serious consideration needs to be given to providing more support for STEM activities, improving our K-12 science curriculum, and integrating the two. We can do better for our students, and they deserve to be better than average. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. Next, we have parent Cory Bello.
Thank you. All right. Nice start. So, normally, I come up here to ask you to do something or not to do something, but today's not that day. I'm a little short. I'm not saying that I'm not going to ask you anything in the future, though. That'll probably happen. But tonight, I want to thank you. Two and a half weeks ago, my kid got a text, and their whole face lit up, they were so excited, and they said, "Mom, guess what?" And I'm sure you can imagine all the great things that your kid might say "guess what" to. Well, mine said, "The bathrooms are opened." The bathrooms are open. Bathrooms. My kid's excited about bathrooms. Yes, they are. So, in the fall, you passed the transgender, non-binary student policy. While it might have seemed like it happened fast to some people, there were several of us who had been asking for this for several years, so, behind the scenes, it didn't go fast. And we had heard that there were going to be non, or, what am I trying to say? Gender-neutral bathrooms, thank you, Steve, that were going to be coming to the high school. And I spoke at the beginning of the year about our plight that we had the first few weeks of school with the location of the single-person restrooms being way out of the way and inconvenient for the kids. So, we were looking forward to these bathrooms, and it took a little longer than we had all hoped for due to outside forces and supply chains and whatnot, but they're open now. And so, for that, I'm saying thank you. Thank you for following through and showing these kids that they matter.
Thank you, Cory. Our next meeting, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on May 10th, 2022, at 6:30 PM. I'd like to now please recommend a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of April 26th, 2022, at 7:55 PM. So moved. Miller? Jenny, thank you.
Second, Jones.
Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned.